Good evening, everyone. But before we call the meeting to order, I just wanted to take a minute to... For those of you who don't know, our mayor, Ross Caldebarn, has passed away. I think it was last Friday night. I'm wondering if... Now, Ross has been in municipal politics in one way or another from, I think, 1973 to 2014. So he was a big part of Wellesley for a long time. He was mayor from 2003 to 2014. So I'm wondering if you'll stand with me and respecting Ross into a moment of silence, please. I think we all have some stories to tell about Ross over the years. Maybe we'll have a little chat after about that. Call the meeting to order. Our land acknowledgement, we'd like to begin by acknowledging the land on which we gather today as the land traditionally used by the Anishinaabe, Haudenosaunee, and Chinotan people. We acknowledge the enduring presence and deep traditional knowledge of the philosophies of the indigenous people with whom we share this land today. Are there any declarations of a pecuniary interest in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act? Council.
I have one with the fire report coming from the chief, sorry. PNF 3/2025.
Okay, that'll be noted. Presentation, no presentations, council. We have two introductions that we're going to do this evening, and I think our senior planner is going to introduce Bobby Sosar. Did I get that right? Okay, you're Bobby. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce Bobby Sosar as the new senior planner at the Township of Wellesley. Bobby comes to us with a wealth of knowledge from the region of Waterloo, where he was a planning information specialist, working on a number of different things: population projections, employment projections, building permit activity, number of information items. He holds a degree in urban planning, and we're going to get him jumping in feet first. And we're really excited to have him and to fill out our complement with Ethan, who's here tonight, too, which you'll hear from a little bit later. So the full planning department is here tonight, and we're really excited about it. So please join me in welcoming Bobby. He'll be speaking to you a little bit about some of the work that's on your agenda tonight. So, thank you.
Welcome. And our clerk, Grace Cauch, is going to introduce Sophia Grande-Lalar, the curator for Wellesley Township Heritage and Historical Society.
Thank you, Mayor Noack. I am happy to introduce to you Sarah, Sarah, my apologies, Sophia Grande-Lalar as the new curator for the township, Wellesley Township Heritage and Historical Society. Sophia was born and raised in Waterloo region, briefly living in Wilmont Township. She began her journey in local history and archives at the Minnetonka Archives of Ontario in 2015 during a co-op placement at Conrad Gravel University College in Waterloo. Thus began a passion for archival work that inspired her to pursue her master's degree in library and information science at Western University. She has worked in a variety of roles at the University of Waterloo Special Collections and Archives, the Wilford Laureate Library, and is currently the Assistant Archivist at the Wellington County Museum and Archives. Sophia is on the Board of Directors for the Waterloo Historical Society. She is passionate about digital archives, genealogy, anti-racist archival description, and connecting with communities over local history. Join me in welcoming Sophia Grande-Lalar.
And I think we're going to hear from you very shortly, too. So I need a motion at this point that the council of the Township of Wellesley accept Andre Jackson, Sophia, Andre, uh, Grande-Lalar, and Nancy Madlin as delegations, moved by councillor Seven, seconded by councillor Wagner, all in favor, and that's carried. So the ring of fire, welcome to the podium. Oh, who's going to speak first? Okay.
I was going to present the budget.
Oh, okay.
The budget for the historic Wellesley Township Heritage and Historical Society, it's in the materials along with the agenda. I present the budget for approval for the year 2025. I'm the chairman of the Wellesley Township Heritage and Historical Society.
Okay. Did you want to speak to the detail? I saw I've read through it. Do we need a motion to accept it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Was there further discussion on the budget?
No.
Okay, so then we're looking for a motion from council to accept it at this point. Councillor Wagner, seconded by councillor Seven, all in favor. Any questions? All in favor, and that's carried. Your budget's been accepted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, are we going to speak? Okay. Okay. I'll now need a motion that made of the whole meeting adjourned to hold a public meeting with respect to the proposed revisions to the existing building permit fees, moved by councillor Seven, seconded by councillor Brick, all in favor, and that's carried. Would the clerk advise the method of advertising?
Notification of this public meeting was posted on the township website and placed in the recent edition of the Willits Observer.
So any person who wants further notice of the passage of a bylaw should give an writing their full name, address, and postal code to the clerk prior to leaving the meeting this evening. And I'll ask our chief building official, Daryl Dennehy, to bring forth the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Noack. So tonight, just a very brief presentation regarding some proposed changes to the building permit fee schedule. So the purpose of the meeting tonight is to inform the public of any changes in fees relating to the enforcement of the municipalities' building bylaw per section 7.6 of the Building Code Act, and to receive input from the public prior to making changes to the proposed fee So some basic principles that we look to achieve when we're looking at building permit fees. The total amount of fees authorized through a municipal bylaw must not exceed the anticipated reasonable cost of the principal authorities, of the principal authority to administer and enforce the Building Code Act. A reserve fund may be established for the purposes of, or for the administration and enforcement of the Building Code Act. And just to note, the fees were last adjusted in January of 2024. So this year, again, just looking at the primary reasons, just dealing, continually dealing with the inflationary pressures, but also just still looking at the long-term review of the permit fees overall. Those are the primary reasons we're looking at it today. So the proposed adjustment of the existing building permit fees is a 5% indexing of all of the fees on the schedule. There was a report, a detailed report done in 2021 that highlighted the estimated balance of the reserve funds based on the seven-year averages for permit fees collected, and also looking at the rising inflationary costs of 3% year-over-year. And that was just an estimated 3%. We've since realized a few heavier years between now and 2021. The intent of the proposed increase is to help maintain a reserve fund within one to one and a half times of the building department's annual operating costs, preventing any future reliance on municipal tax subsidies. So basically, have enough there for the harder times, so we're not dipping into municipal taxes or increasing municipal taxes. So just briefly here, the colored triangles is sort of the focus of the slide. So in 2021, when we did first look at future costs, if nothing was done, there was a potential for a dramatic drop in permit fees. Now, that chart's not perfect. It didn't account for interest collected on the existing reserve fund. But the concept, and because we've increased the fee schedule the way we have, in part, the orange triangle has sort of closed that gap. It's okay to be under 100%. We anticipate dipping down the way it shows, but essentially what we were trying to do, and what we've almost accomplished, is just closing that gap a bit, making sure that the inflationary costs didn't outpace the revenues collected. So essentially, the next steps would be to review any comments and input made by the public or from the public regarding the proposed fees. And with that in mind, implement and include, if necessary, the revisions into the fees and charges by law being prepared for council approval in April of this year. To note, the building department hasn't received any comments. The municipality hasn't to date received any written comments. The meeting was, I'm not sure if this was said already, but the meeting was advertised in the Willits Observer and online. Grace is nodding yes, that was mentioned. Yeah, happy to take any questions council may have.
Questions from council? No questions from council. Just, I noticed, reading through the report, that pretty much, the new fees will pretty much align with the other municipalities in the area. Could you speak to that just briefly?
Yeah, we always, we always do a cross-check every year to make sure that after, or looking at the proposed permit fees, that we're relatively on pace or par with the neighboring municipalities. In some categories, it's really close, in other categories, we're a little low, others a little high. But overall, the average is quite, quite on par, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Daryl. Are there any persons who wish to make oral or written submissions in regard to the study? If so, would they please leave, give their name, addresses, and postal code to the clerk? Is anyone here for that purpose only? Seeing none? Okay, and we'll wait to see what happens. I'll need a motion now that the public meeting is adjourned, and council meeting resumed, moved by councillor Wagner, seconded by councillor Seven, all in favor, and that's carried. We'll go right to recreation. Councillor Wagner.
Thank you. Service board reports. Yep, come on up to the podium, Pearl.
Good evening, everyone, council and Mr. Mayor. Better get this done. We just had our first event of the year on this past Saturday. It was a pancake breakfast for our community, and we had advertised it in the, I think it was on the website. And it's not usually a huge event, but we did have about 75 attendees, and we had an income of about $882, and our expenses were $460.74. And, but we had food donations of $234.44, which was, allowed us to have a profit of So one of the things that we also discovered when we were at the, at this event, preparing for it, is that one of our ovens is not working very well. And one of the other things that were, is an ongoing issue, is that our electrical outlets are, we don't have enough of them in convenient places for running electrical appliances for, for most of these events. So that is something that we might be considering later. So our future events for this year are Canada Day, July 1st, we will be hosting again another fireworks, or plan to, fireworks and celebration. And we also have booked a corn roast and barbecue for August the 28th. And we, but we have also recently been informed that we will be being charged for more than two events a year. So that is something that we have to consider. If we are going to be charged for running the event for something that we are fundraising for the township, then we have to like, we don't know, what's our role in this whole thing? But it's, you know, something that we have to decide, because one of the other events that we hadn't specifically planned was a cleanup day for, for the community grounds, community center grounds, as well as the streets in Hawxville. But there again, if we're going to be charged for it, we don't take any income in for that event, and so is that an event that we are going to have to pay for to be able to use the facility? So anyway, that is a wrap-up for this, for the, this current year. But I also wanted to let everybody know that we have voted a new chair for the Hawxville Recreation Board. And so our new chair is Bob Caskinett. You want to stand up, Bob? So everyone can see. And he will be taking over from my position from hereforth. So, do you have any more questions?
Thanks, Pearl. Does anyone have questions? As I mentioned, and you had reached out to me about that, so I did speak to Danny, and we will be reviewing that policy. I think we have to discuss that, because I, I think when we have committees still that are fundraising for things within the township, that it's one of those areas that we have to relook at, so. So we will, we will address it, I believe, Danny, you said, in May?
Yes, councillor Wagner, in the affiliation policy, in the report that council received last year, it did specify that in May of each year, the policy will be reviewed by staff and brought back to council with any recommended changes that may come from that review.
So we will definitely take that. They've all heard, heard it now, too. Okay. Thanks, Pearl.
Thank you.
Derek, did you have anything for Wellesley? And nothing for Linwood? Okay. So staff reports, rec. 1, 2024 Memorial Wall, motion required. The recommendation that the council of the Township of Wellesley approve the northwest corner of the second floor of the Bill Geese Recreation Centre as the dedicated space for a memorial wall for the recreation user groups of the Township of Wellesley to display memorial jerseys and that are currently displayed at the old Wellesley Arena, as well as future items. Do I have a mover? Moved by Derek, seconded by Lori. Any discussion on that?
Very straightforward, I think.
Yep, seeing no discussion. I will call a vote, all in favor of the recommendation, carried unanimously. Rec. 2, 2025 Disc Golf Course, motion required. Recommendation that the council of the Township of Wellesley approve the proposal from Chain Link Disc Golf for the supply of disc golf materials and the course installation consultation for a six-hole disc golf course, an estimated amount of $9,159.80 plus HST on the grounds of the Township of Wellesley Recreation Complex, and further that this project be funded from donations from the Wellesley Lions Club, the ABC Festival, and the Wellesley Recreation Service Board, and further that the Township of Wellesley accept the donations in the amount of $4,000 from the Wellesley Lions Club, $4,000 from the ABC Festival, and approve the remaining amount for the project to be funded from the Wellesley Recreation Service Board fundraising account. Do I have a mover? Moved by Derek, seconded by Lori. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I think this is the first of a planned expansion. I think we're going to go to nine holes. This is sort of a, like a pilot project to see how, how much enthusiasm there is for this part. And if all goes well, then I think they'll be adding another three, or they hope to add another three holes maybe next year or so. I just brought that up.
Okay. Any other questions? I just have a question. Danny, can you tell me, after this donation, have we considered what, who is going to be paying each year for any maintenance, what that maintenance may look like going forward? And then if, as the mayor mentioned about extending to three more holes next year, is that going to also be a donation from these groups? Or are they then expecting us to carry the costs?
To answer your question on the maintenance, that will fall into our, the Township Recreation Staff's maintenance plan going forward, as any project does once the municipality takes on the donated project. So we would take, we would be taking on that maintenance. In speaking with the company that is supplying the product and installing, they're, they tell us the maintenance that is very minimal in these, for these courses. It's just, there's your garbage pails, a couple garbage pails throughout the course, that's the extent of the maintenance. There is some, the T-boxes will be wood chips. So they said maybe twice a year you go and rake the wood chips, but they said a lot of time the disc golfers take that on themselves to make sure that those, that their T-boxes are in good shape. Still would be something that staff would have to be monitoring at times. As far as expansion, at this point, there hasn't been a request for expansion. This is, this is the initial, this is the initial proposal from Chain Link with six holes. They did say in the meeting that, that when we met, that it could be expanded. So there has not been conversation with any of the groups about funding of that at this point.
Okay. And that yearly maintenance fee, just a ballpark, what do we think that would be?
It would be tough to quantify what the cost would be to, to go out and empty the garbages and doing the raking. I'm anticipating if it would be an hour every two, an hour or two every two weeks, that would be probably on the high end, from what we know of the, how the disc golf courses are typically maintained.
Okay. I had one other question. There was comment in the report about changing from the wood to concrete? If that's the case, then you're saying we would also take on that cost if we choose to go that way in the near future or in the future?
So the wood chips were recommended by the, by Chain Link Disc Golf to start off, and that is to, to not put that cost out initially on a course in a new area, not knowing what the uptake would, would be. So that, that's why they recommended doing the wood chips first, because it's much more cost-effective to do that, and then add the concrete pads later. I would expect that that would come at request of the users, and then at that time, it would have to be considered by council. If, if staff brought forth a recommendation, that would have to be considered by council at budget time.
Okay, thank you. If anyone else has any other questions, I will call a vote, all in favor of the recommendation carried. Rec. 3, 2025 Future of Hawxville Community Centre for Information. The recommendation is that the council of the Township of Wellesley receive this report for information and to direct staff to proceed with public consultation. Do I have a mover? Moved by Derek, seconded by Lori. Discussion?
Bring back. Then speak.
There's no discussion. Okay. Danny, do you have a report you want to bring forward?
Sure, I can introduce a report. Thanks, councillor Wagner. As stated in the report, this is a for information report to have council direct staff to begin the next step in the process towards a decision on the future of the Hawxville Community Centre. The next step would be a public consultation. Staff have identified four options for council to consider. Council may consider other options as well, but these are the four options staff have identified, with pros and cons of each option, as well as some high-level cost estimates for each option. With council's approval, staff will begin the public consultation. Staff would recommend a mail-out to all residents in Ward 1, as well as an online survey to the remainder of township residents. The information provided in this report would be the information provided in the survey. Staff would bring the results of the survey back to council to request direction to move on to the next step in the process as described in this report. If any questions of council may have any.
Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
So Danny, when you're doing the consultation, I'm just going back to a little bit of history when they built the Linwood facility there. That was built actually a large part by the community, both with in-kind and financial donations. And I'm wondering, when you're doing the consultation, whether that type of a question could be asked to the community, no matter what, what their preference is as far as the four are concerned, just to see if, to see what the buy-in of the community is as far as the finances, financial aspect of that.
Yeah, that's something that can be added into that report, into that survey.
Okay. Yep.
Just another question, Danny. I think the four options that you presented are all broken up pretty good. I'm just wondering if we're going into the extent of doing this report, is there, should we be looking at what it would look like if we didn't replace it? And not because I think that that is, I think these are good options, but I believe if we're doing the report, that that should be something we consider if we're, if we're doing, going to the extent of the report.
Yeah, and I agree. When we put a survey out, that could be an option that's put into the survey, as well as the options that are presented into the report. At this point, these are the staff recommendations, but as I stated, there could be other options that council may ask staff to consider.
Okay.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be option four, Derek? Which is to...
I guess option four is to maintain, but we can only main, at some point, there's going to come a time where it's no longer maintainable. So it's just maybe taking it a little bit further out and, and looking at the pros and the cons of that.
So just to clarify, you're, you're speaking to not a maintenance option, you're speaking more to a removal and not replace option, is what you're saying?
Yes, I think if we're going to the extent of doing the report, it should be something we're considered, and hopefully it comes up with more cons than pros. But I think we're not doing ourselves a service if we don't look at that as an option as part of the report.
Okay. Thank you. Any other? So at this point, I guess we just have to vote to, to have staff, direct staff to go ahead?
Accept the recommendation.
Okay. So all in favor of the recommendation? And that is, that is all I, oh, sorry, director update.
I do have one, if you can just bear with me for a moment.
I do have one, if you can just bear with me for a moment. Thanks again, Council Wagner. The last day of ice in St. Clement's is March 30th, with the ice plant being shut down on March 31st. Interviews for facility operators are being set up in the next few weeks, and the closing date for the Recreation Service Representative was March 24th, and staff are reviewing those resumes as well to get interviews set up. The part-time front desk positions' closing date is March 29th, so there is still time to get resumes submitted. The Wellas the Apple Jacks are playing game three of their division championship series tonight at the Wilmot Recreation Complex against New Hamburg Firebirds. The series is currently tied 1-1. Game four will be back at the Bill Geese Recreation Center on Thursday at 7:30. Game five in New Hamburg on Saturday at 7:30. Game six, if necessary, will be back at home on Sunday at 7:30, and game seven would be in New Hamburg on Tuesday, April 1st. So we're hoping that the Jacks can move on from this series and continue to fill the building. Drop-in numbers continue to increase for most of our programs offered, which has been great. The building's been busy. Camp All I Want to Do has reported that camp numbers for this summer are better than they anticipated, with averaging of about 40 spots per week as of yesterday. I have also, for the decorating committee, I've scheduled a meeting with all of the groups that were identified in the report that was brought forth last year by Chris Martin for April the 5th, Saturday, April 5th. And for the trophy cases, I'm meeting with the groups that will require space in the trophy cases this Thursday at 4:00 PM. And the last thing is, the last day of ice is scheduled at the Bill Geese Recreation Center for April 13th. If the Apple Jacks are still playing, we have ensured the team that the ice would remain in for the remainder of their playoffs. Just to put that to rest, there has been some conversation about that, so I just wanted to put that to rest now. I will take any questions if there are any.
Anyone have any questions?
Just a comment. I'm hearing from some folks in the community, Danny, that, you know, there are a number of people that have been laid off and that are losing their job because of the situation, the economy, the way things are happening right now. And I'm just wondering, when it comes to the applications that you're getting for the different positions, are you noticing a significant uptake? Are you seeing more than maybe you anticipated? Has it been very competitive? I'm just curious, actually.
For the facilities operator position, we saw about the same amount of applications that we've seen the last couple rounds of operator, when positions were posted. The Recreation Services Representative, it's a new position, so it's difficult to say if there was an uptake. We did receive more resumes than I maybe thought we would have.
Okay. I guess that's close enough.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Danny? Okay, seeing none, and I am done.
Okay. Planning and Development? No, wait a second. Yes, Planning and Development, Council Brick.
All right, I need a motion that PND 4/2025 Propose Building Permit Fee Increase. The recommendation that the Council of the Township of Wellesley receive input from the public meeting and direct staff to repair the proposed changes to Schedule A of the Fees and Charges Bylaw. Do I have a mover? Council Seven, seconded by Council Wagner. Do you have anything further to bring forward on that one, Daryl?
No, I don't believe so. I believe it's in that report.
Thank you. Any questions for Daryl on that report? I'll call the question, all those in favor, and that's carried, unanimous. I would ask the director if you have an update.
Thanks, Council Brick. Just a short one, three points I want to make. One, we completed our competition for the senior planner. He's here tonight, I introduced him. Bobby will be getting started right away on a number of development applications, policy initiatives, et cetera. So again, we're happy to have him with us. And number two, the draft community improvement plan is progressing well. It will be available shortly for public and agency feedback, so we're kind of in the last steps of putting that together. We're planning the statutory public meeting for that on April 22nd, followed by a consideration by council for adoption on May 13th. So hoping to get it out this week, early next week, for a good six-week public and agency commenting period. So that's on its way. Lastly, tonight, work on the asset management plan is progressing well. You'll be hearing from Ethan, as well as Peter from Watson... Hey, Peter? As part of the training and education session in camera tonight. So that's all. Any questions, if unless there are any questions.
Any questions? None, thank you.
Okay. Rhode and Bridge, Council Hergert is absent. There are no staff reports, but we do have a director's update.
Thank you, Mayor Nowak. I'll give an update on behalf of Chris Cook, Director of Public Works. He has sent the following in. The asphalt tender closed today, so council will see the results of that for approval at the next meeting. Winter parking restrictions are lifted as of the end of this month. That means this coming Monday. Our Public Works staff will be moving back to their summer operation schedule starting Monday, March 31st. Any need for winter control outside of 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Monday to Friday, will be called in based after that. And we will have a patrol completed regularly in the early morning based on the weather. And lastly, the reduced load period for trucks is ongoing until the end of April. Vehicles are limited to five tons per axle on paved roads during this time. The restriction does not apply to the gravel roads or to the regional roads. And that's all I have.
Any questions? Move on to Property and Fire, Council Seven.
Thanks, Mayor Nowak. Property and Fire, 3/2025. Recommendation that the Council of the Township of Wellesley approve extending adult gym memberships as a taxable benefit to all active township firefighters. Can I have a mover? Council Wagner?
I should point out that Council Brick has declared a conflict on this one as well. That's why he's left.
And can I have a second, or?
I can second.
Thank you. Would Fire Chief Redmond like to bring the report forward? Thanks, Paul. Any discussion? Shall we?
I'm not sure who exactly to direct this to, but currently, is it just full-time staff that has this opportunity at the township? So if we open this up to the firefighters, are we also opening it up to recreation staff? Other staff that, I mean...
Yeah, so currently, that's not in the recommendation. This one is specific to firefighters, but that is potentially something that council could consider in the future, or if you even wanted to add it today, you could. But that's not on the recommendation at this time.
And we haven't had anyone show interest to that, that are working?
That, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if Danny, Danny would have the most part-time staff.
Yeah, I can't speak today if we have. It's pretty widely known that this option is available to full-time staff. With the turnover in part-time staff, it might be something that is difficult to monitor, and that's not saying that we couldn't, but that is something to consider.
And on that note, then, if there is a firefighter that does leave, the gym membership would expire on the date of their leaving the township? Okay, okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimous.
Okay. Move to Ed. Director's report.
Just remember that. Paul, do you have a director's report?
Yeah, just a quick one tonight. Thank you, Council Seven. So on March 3rd, obviously, a number of people in the room were at an event held for retired District Chief Ted Stroh, it was a great night. So as part of my report, as a result of that, we obviously replaced Ted, which opened up a captain's spot in the Station 53. So we have promoted a gentleman named Ryan Good. Ryan's been with us for about five years. He was previously with the Woolwich Fire Department, based out of St. Clement's, and he came to us as a captain from there, came to a firefighter, so he has previous captain experience. So we made that job offer to him on March 5th. That was effective immediately, so we're back up to full complement in that station. Our recruit update, going well. We're well into the program. The recruits were certified in first aid CPR this past weekend. We're putting them into the burn building. Some live fire a little bit later in the month. They'll be writing their tests by June. We'll be seeing them on the trucks, hopefully by before summertime. And yeah, we got, so we had applied for some money from the OFM. There was money offered to all the fire departments in the province, broken down over three years. First year, $10 billion offered to split up between the province specifically for cancer prevention. So there was very strict parameters on what we could say spend our money on. So we put through for flash hoods, so that, you know, that keeps the contaminants and everything that would go into the skin for the firefighters when they were in the gear, and for spare, actually, as soon as they mask. And we were told we were going to be getting about $9,000, and we ended up getting $23,955. We will split between the three stations. We'd just gotten back to see if some of that could include, because that's a lot of masks, a lot of hoods. So we're going to see if we can maybe expand that and get some of the specialized soap that we use. And each one of our stations has an industrial washer and extractor, and a 20-liter pail of that soap is in the $400-$500 range. So we're going to see if we can use some of that after they go to anything that's carcinogens and that kind of smoke in their gear, that we have that. So that was a nice little surprise to get there. That is it for me.
Thanks, Paul.
Move to Admin and Finance. Staff reports, AF and P 11/2025. And the recommendation is that the Council of the Township of Wellesley support the installation of a microforest at the Linwood Public School, funded from the Anova Restoration Reforestation Grant Fund. I have a mover for that, please. Council Seven, seconded by Council Wagner. And who would...
Amy?
Oh, Sam.
Thanks, Mayor Nowak. So the Township of Wellesley will be sponsoring a microforest at Linwood Public School. The microforest program is through Sustainable Waterloo Region. Microforests are great for the climate. They increase the tree canopy, which reduces greenhouse gases, reduces water runoff, as well as creates homes and habitats for animals. Having a microforest at a school is also a great way for the students to learn and explore. The microforest plant will happen May 1st at Linwood School, and Sustainable Waterloo Region is asking for volunteers from the school, as well as township staff and council. And that money, the sponsorship, the $6,000, and that will come from the, as Mayor Nowak said, the Anova reforestation grant that the township is giving yearly.
Okay. Questions? So I just think it's a fantastic program. And my thought when I read through this, it's the Anova group that really is funding this, and I'm just wondering if we shouldn't communicate with them as to how their money is being spent? Because I think it might be something that they may want to pick up on throughout the region, because it's a fantastic initiative, for sure. So maybe we can figure out a way of doing that.
Yes, absolutely, that's a great idea.
And even when we put up the site, if they maybe might want to put a small sign up, this is sponsored by Anova?
Yes, there will be a sign. So our logo will go on it, but that is a discussion we can have as well.
Yeah, with Anova.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, any other, so I'll call a question? All in favor? And that's carried. AF and P 12/2025 Remuneration and Expenses for Members of Council, and that is their for information. Could I have a mover for that, please? Council Wagner, seconded by Council Seven. And are we going to bring a report to that? Jeff? I think I cut him, please.
Thanks, Mayor. The report was included. I think there's nothing unusual this year, so it's similar to the reports you've seen in prior years. So nothing significant or unusual to note in this year's report at all.
Okay. Any questions? So I'll call a question for information. Council Brick, you moving? Oh, I call a question, just a second. All in favor? Okay, a director's update. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. So the financial audit is in full swing right now. So up until this week, the finance department was busy producing financial statements, schedules, and various reports that the auditors have requested and sharing them with them. Starting this week, so commencing on Monday, they are actively looking at our files and reviewing our files and everything we've provided. And now we're waiting for questions and subsequent asks. So, you know, they'll be looking at our trial balance and our financial statements and come up with a list of questions and different tests they want to do to make sure that our financials are complete and accurate. So we're just waiting on those now. So I suspect this will continue on for a number of weeks, so probably through April. We'll be busy with the financial audit. Also, just to give an update, so we're also recruiting for two positions in finance. The window is closed for resumes, and Sarah in HR has been helping us review those resumes. We received probably hundreds of resumes in total for the two roles, and she's helping us review and come up with a shortlist of candidates for interviews that will hopefully be done in the next couple of weeks. Ideally, we'd start next week and see where we go.
How many?
Hundreds, like between the two roles. Couple hundred each at least. Probably more.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Move to the information items. And I'm going to start with a motion that the for information package be accepted as presented, moved by Council Wagner, seconded by Council Seven. And we do have a staff presentation at this time. Mr. Bobby Sosar. Senior Planner, Regional Waterloo Workplace Count.
Good evening, council, and I'm happy to be presenting to you tonight as the new senior planner for the Township of Wellesley. As Tim mentioned, I came from the region of Waterloo, where I had the opportunity to work on this project that I'm going to be presenting about tonight, the 2024 Workplace Count. Next slide, please. So about the Workplace Count, it's a survey of businesses across the region.